Well, looks, I've already put in. One.
We're going to call the meeting for Akron City Council to order. Clerk will read the roll.
Roll call Freeman, Fusco, Hope, Camer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neil, Imovian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky.
For those who voluntarily wish to do so, will you please stand as we are led in prayer? I'm going to ask if District Missionary May Walker is in the audience. In her absence, I'm going to ask if Councilwoman Sims will lead us in prayer. Immediately following our prayer, I'm going to ask if Councilwoman Samples will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Great God, we just thank you so much, just for another day. We thank you for how you stood with us and walked with us through the day and provided us safe passage. We thank you, oh God, for the privilege that you've given us even to assemble here today. Lord, we just ask that the words of our mouth and the meditations of our heart would be acceptable to you. Lord, everything that you purposed today, we pray that it will go forth as you intended. And we'll be sure always to give you honor, praise, and glory. That is, do your son's name. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will read the minutes from our previously held meeting.
Minutes from September 9th, 2019. Council convened a regular session at 7:00 PM with President Somerville in the chair. All members were present. Minutes of the previous regular meeting were approved. Reading of petitions and communications. Report of standing and special committees. Passage and referral of new ordinances and resolution. Representation from various divisions and departments. Public speaking period. Further business on a motion by Fusco, council adjourned at 8:31 PM to reconvene in regular session on September 16th, 2019, for a special call.
Any corrections or additions? All in favor signify by saying aye. The ayes have it. And one abstention. Letters, petitions, and communications.
Petition of Borgo Properties LLC for a conditional use to construct a commercial storage facility on the south side of Springfield Lake Boulevard, east of George Washington Boulevard.
File.
Petition of Community Action Agency for a conditional use to construct a parking lot and the sale of ci- on the sale of city-owned land on West Center Street.
File.
Petition of Michael Ferguson for a conditional use to establish a daycare business center at 1868 Marigold Avenue.
File.
Petition of CMI Holdings for a conditional use to place an outdoor advertising display on property at 1025 South Broadway.
File.
Thirteen letters expressing opposition to the proposed cell tower at 550 East Wilbon.
File.
Correspondence from the City of Norton notifying council of a pending application for a community reinvestment area agreement from Clinton Aluminum Distribution Incorporated with the City of Norton.
File.
Notice of a new D-5J liquor permit to Janee R. Bradford doing business as the Mature Lounge Eatery at 271 South Main Street.
Special Attention, Councilman Swirsky.
Correspondence from Carson Barnes, including articles regarding economic opportunities and Elevate Akron.
File. Before you, you have the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Roll call final passage. Fusco, Hope, Camer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neil, Imovian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky.
This evening, we do have three public hearings. So I'm going to ask if there's anyone here in the audience that would like to speak at any one of our public hearings, if you could please stand at this time so that you may be sworn in by a member of our law department.
If you intend to speak at the public hearings, please stand, raise your right hand, and answer the affirmative. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Legal notice is hereby given that the following public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, September 16th, during the regular meeting, council meeting, at 7:00 PM in Akron City Council Chambers, 166 South High Street, upon an ordinance authorizing conditional use to establish a three-unit apartment house at 418 Crestwood Avenue.
Ms. Trantinucci.
Commander President, members of council. Michael White is requesting permission to establish the property as a three-family dwelling consistent with its current configuration. The building appears to have been originally constructed as a two-family dwelling in 1919 in this West Hill neighborhood. Zoning records indicate the property was converted from a two-family residence for use as a three-unit apartment house several years ago and has been vacant for some time. The petitioner states the dwelling has been vacant for several years and would be cost prohibitive for a buyer to purchase the property and convert it back into a single-family dwelling. Zoning staff has inspected the property and verifies that there are three completely separate units and utilities and that the property is in fair condition. Petitioner also owns and maintains the similarly arranged three-unit dwelling at 436 Crestwood, which is 100 feet to the south. This received conditional use approval in 1987 for three. It's a desire of the petitioner to fully renovate, maintain, and lease this large structure as a three-unit dwelling, just as he has done at 436 Crestwood. Though the lot can only provide two off-street parking spaces, the owner is willing to allow additional off-street parking to be used at 436 Crestwood or remove the existing garage to provide more parking on-site. The use of the dwelling for a three-family unit will allow for this vacant dwelling to be renovated, leased, and maintained instead of remaining vacant, and both planning commission and planning staff recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Very good. We're just going to ask if you please approach the podium, give us your name and your address.
My name is Michael White. My address is 336 South Rose Boulevard. So I am the owner of 418 Crestwood. I've been the owner for about almost 30 days now. I purchased the property because it sat vacant and was a blight to the neighborhood. I own a property right behind that house, and I also own the house about 100 yards to the south of it. And I've maintained those properties. I don't have any argument with the Neighborhood and Neighborhood Association. I think we all have a common goal to make Akron, the quality of Akron housing better. I've done that throughout my tenure there with that house. I've owned those properties for 23 years. I've maintained them well, I've maintained them within the standards of the neighborhood. The reason I'm here today is because this house kind of got caught up in the zoning code. So there was code added to the zoning code that said if a house sits vacant for more than two years, it has to revert back to its intended and original intent. And they've resounded it as a single-family house. My issue with that is, I'm not asking to establish a new three-unit house, it was already a three-unit house. I'm not asking to change any walls or modify any walls. I'm just asking to be able to use it as it's been designed. To not do that would cost quite a bit of money to renovate the house. It has three separate hot water tanks, three separate furnaces, three separate kitchens, three separate living rooms. To try to convert that back into a single-family house is just cost prohibitive. So I'm just simply asking to use it as it's designed, not to make any modifications to it. When I met with the planning commission a month ago, some of the issues were about the parking, and I was willing to make accommodations for parking so that I wouldn't impede on the existing residents' ability to park on the street. I do own, like I mentioned, the property behind it, the property to the south of it. So I'm willing to make the accommodations to allow additional parking so that this won't be a nuisance to the neighborhood. I've, you can kind of confer with the tenants and the other neighbors. I feel like I've maintained the property very well. In the last three months, I'm sorry, in the last eight months, I've renovated three other houses in Akron. And I'd be happy to let you guys come back and see those houses or talk to the neighbors of those houses. They, I try to do a really good job of making sure that the house, after I get done with it, looks a significant amount better than it did before I touched it. And I'm willing to do the same thing with this house. The opposition this morning was really about the history of the zoning code and the desire to maintain single-family ownership in Akron, Ohio. And I certainly understand that. But when you have a blighted house and one that sits vacant, I would think that people would rather see it being used and being occupied than sit vacant and go into decay. So I'd be happy to answer any questions from council if there are any at this time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against? Anyone here that would like to speak against? Seeing and hearing now, we will close the public hearing. Councilman Fusco.
Thank you. I'd like to pull the committee to refer this item. Imovian, Camer, Neil, Swirsky.
Thank you, this item will be referred.
Public hearing number two. Ordinance authorizing a text change to define grocery store and define, classify, and regulate discount store as retail A, number three, or higher use.
Ms. Trantinucci.
Commander President, members of council. The zoning code was enacted in 1922, and as such, many of its definitions and listed uses need to be revised or updated to reflect modern realities. Within the last two decades, there's been a noticeable uptick in retail discount stores that sell all, where substantially all items are for less than $5, such as Dollar General, Family Dollar, or Dollar Tree. Nationwide, there are over 30,000 such stores. To date, there are 30 such discount stores in Akron. However, there are only 16 mass-market fresh food grocery stores. In comparison, the City of Cleveland has 37 discount stores, where Akron has 30. The Institute for Local Self-Reliance reports that while discount stores sometimes fill a need in cash-strapped communities, growing evidence suggests these stores are not merely a byproduct of economic stress, but a cause of it. Discount stores tend to employ fewer people than the grocery stores they eliminate. Furthermore, discount stores often trigger the closure of grocery stores, thus reducing access to fresh food. Discount stores tend to concentrate in areas that already have few or no grocery stores, often in African-American neighborhoods. By doing so, the saturation of discount stores in neighborhoods makes it nearly impossible for new grocers and other businesses to take root and grow. Planning staff researched and examined how other municipalities have addressed or regulated discount stores. In an effort to prevent the oversaturation of discount stores in certain areas of the city and the potential for retail blight, the city is proposing text changes that will define and classify the stores. Discount stores tend to require a single-use store with a fairly large site to accommodate parking and access for large semi-trucks with trailers. Therefore, a discount store should be classified within a retail or U3 district with an A3 or greater area classification, because these uses are incompatible in many of Akron's A1 and A2 neighborhood-oriented retail districts, which in large part are situated in small nodes at the intersection of collector's streets abutting residentially-zoned properties. These stores would also be permitted within a commercial district classification, which is a U4. Additionally, discount stores should be required to have a 2,500-foot minimum distance between them where permitted to prevent clustering in certain areas. This is results in availability of land for a healthy mix of retail uses and a potential for vacancies. Objectives of the Land Use and Development Guide Plan include providing well-planned, designed, and located business areas and sufficient size and locations to service the needs of the population, developing retail areas in such a manner that they do not harm adjacent residential areas, and discouraging the overdevelopment of retail activities that lead to retail blight. The overabundance and concentration of discount stores has the potential to create pockets of blight, promulgate food deserts, and create disinvestment of potential grocers and other local retailers throughout Akron. Such, the planning staff and the planning commission recommends approval of the proposed text changes.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against? Anyone would like to speak against? Seeing and hearing now, we will close the public hearing. Councilman Fusco.
I'd like to pull the committee to refer this item. Imovian.
Aye.
Camer.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Swirsky.
This item will be referred.
Yep.
Okay. Public hearing number three. Legal notice is hereby given that the following public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, September 16th, during a regular council meeting, 7:00 PM, in Akron City Council Chambers, 166 South High Street, on an ordinance authorizing conditional use to establish an apartment development at 44 South Summit Street.
Ms. Trantinucci.
Commander President, members of council. Historic Summit Properties LLC is proposing to utilize the upper two vacant floors of the building for apartments. There will be three apartments on the second floor accessible through an interior hallway. Each unit will contain one bedroom. The only unit on the third floor will have 2,900 square feet of area. Exterior access to apartments will be through a separate entrance door along the Summit Street frontage. Building occupies roughly 40% of the lot. An existing paved parking lot for 13 spaces is on the north side of the building. One goal of the Land Use and Development Guide Plan is to promote a variety of new housing types. The conditionally-approved medical marijuana dispensary on the ground level of the building will be totally separate and will not impose on the apartments above. Proposed apartments are located on the eastern edge of downtown, in close proximity to the Arts District and North Side Community Entertainment District. The interior renovation of the two upper floors of this 102-year-old building into apartments is harmonious with the city's efforts to increase the number of people living downtown and will add more vibrancy to the neighborhood, and both planning commission and planning staff recommend approval, subject to conditions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Hi, I'm Tony Tropey. I'm here on behalf of Historic Summit Properties. I'm the managing member. My address is 1 South Main Street. So I just wanted you to take a moment and reflect on all the good works that are going on in the city right now. We can look around and we can see the infrastructure, and some would call it growing pains, others would liken it more to giving birth. I don't know anything about that, other than birthing big ideas, and that's what we're aspiring to do. I love it when a plan comes together. I love it that the city has strong leadership from the Planning and Economic Development Department and a strong mayor that says, hey, we want people living downtown. So I put my hand up and, count me in, that's part of the plan. And it's a good one, because we're preparing for the future, and we're doing it one building at a time. So this example on Summit Street is just taking a vacant building, creating a mix of uses, and celebrating the architectural heritage of the historic district that it's a part of. So I would like you to favorably review this request and let us continue to provide great examples of how to take blight and turn it into light. Questions, comments, concerns?
No, thank you so much, Mr. Tropey. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against? Anyone here that would like to speak against? Seeing and hearing now, we will close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco.
I'd like to pull committee for a favorable report with suspension of rules. Imovian.
Aye.
Camer.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Swirsky.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing now, the rules have been suspended.
Yes, thank you, President Somerville. There's five conditions the petitioner has agreed to at this time. This is truly what we're seeing more and more of in our downtown, as mentioned, whereas you have a mixed-use office, retail, commercial, and residential together. So we, I know the ward council representative, Mr. Swirsky's in favor of this, so that's why we're asking to pass it this evening. Thank you.
Very good. The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention.
Okay.
Councilman Fusco, we'll see you in pleasure on the rest of the agenda.
Thank you.
We actually want to do roll call on that first.
Yes, I think so.
Roll call final passage. Fusco, Hope, Camer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neil, Imovian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky.
All right, Councilman Fusco.
Yes, I'd like to request that we take time on four and five.
Time will be granted on items four and five.
I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with suspension of rules on item number six. Imovian.
Aye.
Camer.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Swirsky.
Aye. Any objections? Seeing and hearing now, the rules have been suspended.
Yes, thank you, President Somerville. This is the Beyond the Table Grant Award Program, the Refashion Neighborhood Partnership Program. They had received 34 applications of 17 were awarded. The estimated amount of the grants altogether is $200,000, which is basically the same level as before. It's just a little re-instituted, reconstituted, if you will, and we recommend approval this evening.
Very good. The rules have been suspended, and the committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Roll call final passage. Fusco, Hope, Camer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neil, Imovian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky.
Councilman Fusco.
Yes, time on seven, and the request of the committee is to file item number eight. Time on the ballots.
Time will be granted. Rules. Councilwoman Keith.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee would like time, please.
Time will be granted. We're now moving to our new legislation.
Okay. New legislation. I remember one offered by Keith. Ordinance authorizing director of public service or his designee without the formality of public advertising forbids to enter into an agreement or agreements for the renewal and upgrade of the City of Akron's Automated Vehicle Location System, AVL, with a compass, compass comm, and declared emergency.
Councilwoman Keith. Thank you, Madam President. The committee would like this to be placed on the consent agenda.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda. We will now go to the portion of our meeting that we refer to as our public comment period. If you wish to speak to council during this time, you may approach the podium. We're going to ask that you do, please sign in, state your full name, and give us your address. You will have three minutes to speak to this body. Speakers are reminded that this is an official meeting. Remarks should be kept respectful and remain to council business. Speakers should refrain from making any personal attacks. Anyone who breaches decorum will be ruled out of order and may be removed from council chambers. Do we have anyone here tonight that would like to speak during our public comment period?
Good evening. I would like to say thank you for the opportunity to speak before this public meeting tonight. My name is Sheila Smith. I reside at 696 Greenwood Avenue. I'm also the precinct committee person for 4B. We were down here last September in committee talking about the issues with dog nuisance, the barking, as you might recall. There was legislate, there was an ordinance change put forth by our councilperson that was not brought to the general body. It died in committee. But I'm here tonight because our neighborhood is suffering from an issue with this dogs, with these dogs. Now, we were down here about barking last time. Now we're down here because there's a appearance of a kennel of dogs in our community that's causing odor from feces and urine not being properly disposed of. We had an officer come out and talk to our neighbor and gave him a, not an ultimatum, but showed him what he needed to do to dispose of that waste. That has not happened. He was supposed to have a slab and also drains. It's a dr- it is a slab only. And I've asked about that, and I was told by an individual that they are not construction people. But your ordinance says here that we have had 40, 45 complaints from residents regarding dogs in this, in this area. This goes back to January of 2017. We have, you have a restriction on kennels. It says, and this is 92.28B, no person shall operate a kennel within the corporate limits of the city unless said kennel is permitted. In reference to our, in our residential area, the amount of feces produced by these dogs is horrific. And if you come out in June, July, August, when we're at high heat, you can't open your windows because of the smell. We need to have something done about this immediately. We have been going through this since, you heard me, January of 17 with these complaints. Now, right next door to us is Fairline, and their ordinance says if that dog yelps and barks or whatever he does, and they have to come out twice, then they are written up as a misdemeanor. Here we sit, 45 complaints later, and we don't feel like anything is done. We've had emails that say that he's in compliant, but a kennel in the middle of a residential area is not acceptable, and we want something done about it. And I would appreciate you guys, we have given Russ Neil, our councilperson, we've given him a mock-up of ordinances based on our lived experience.
There your time is up.
And we'd love to have that seen after. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Smith, for sharing that information.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Althea Williams. I am, I actually, I live at 680 Greenwood. I stay exactly next door to the address that we're, we're talking about. And I know that, or hope that, or if you have parents or elderly parent that you still have the privilege of taking, being taken care of them, you want their last days to be uneventful. And I have a 93-year-old mother that is there, and with this persistence of dog barking, it wakens her. Matter of fact, my mother has, my mother suffered from Alzheimer's. And because of that, the mind condition is totally different. You might be able to go to sleep back after a dog bark, but it's very, very hard. I am also an instructor as well as a nurse. And being disrupted at night, I have to go to work in the morning. And if I don't get my rest, as well as my mom don't get the rest, and you show up at my hospital, I might end up giving you the wrong medication because I did not get my rest. This happens every night. Not only that, the odor is so bad that we, I cannot open up my windows on one side of my house. I sit outside in the back of my house. The odor seem like it comes over the house. I have a container that I will provide of a picture where I got fly trap, and I also went and bought a large trap to where I put it in my, in my yard. And of two hours of a time, there, this contain, this container is probably about that large, within two hours, I had two of them, and they're dated. They are filled with- They are filled with flies. Not only that, this is of a thought, is that the air seem like is just so bad that my flowers are not even doing well. Now, that might sound kind of like out there, but I have, normally have a beautiful yard with beautiful flowers. And I have flies that is dead on my spikes in my flower. And so, it's very difficult, again, to be able to live next door to all of this. And I'm asking that we definitely need to have something done about a disturbance of odors, a disturbance of barking to be done. And I, and not only is it in our neighborhood, it is in many neighborhoods. But I'm really, really is asking, because my mother needs this rest, and so do I. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams, thank you so much. I'm going to ask if you and Mrs. Smith will meet with Councilman Neal after the meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Daryl Dorsey. I reside at 690 Greenwood Avenue, Akron, Ohio. I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity, first and foremost, of letting me speak right now. But to let you also know that I reside also with my neighbors here, too. I've gone down to my neighbor's house, knocked on his door at 5 o'clock, sorry, 6 o'clock in the morning, because his dogs woke me up. So, you may not have experienced, and this, this dog issue of somebody, somebody's dog just barking throughout the night, yeah, you can call the police, that's fine. But after the police finally get tired of coming out to the house and talking with the individual, only then may they get cited. In the meantime, myself and my neighbors have to deal with the odor that is just horrendous. So, not to be able to just walk around the block and enjoy your neighborhood, I'm sure all of you, and I'm sure all of you do this on a continuous basis, and you enjoy it, and it's safe for you. But for us, it's just like living, I can't even say the projects, because it's worse than that. So, just to bring it to your attention and make you aware of it is one thing. But after I went down to the police station and I got all the complaints, it's over 66 complaints. And if, if we're bringing this to your attention only for it to be turned over as another page, it only starts even a bigger tremendous, how can I say, a more, a bigger explosion that's going to come about. Because even, if I came down to your house and confront you at 6 o'clock in the morning, you're wondering who's knocking at your door, and I just tell you it's your neighbor, you don't want to hear from me at 6 o'clock in the morning, but I haven't slept all night, and I don't think that you should either. So, you don't like that, and I'm pretty sure none of you would like it either. So, it's only my guess and my hope that you would listen to what we have said. Even, we've also even had, how can I, the individuals that come and that, that pick up rodents come down there and spray for rats and everything in that area. My neighbor has picked up some in his, in his area also. I'm just asking for a little bit of help, because if I don't get any sleep, and then I go and knock on my neighbor's door, and he don't get no sleep either, it creates a problem, because next thing you know, the police are called because something's off. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey.
My name is Mary Reed. My husband and I reside at 670 Greenwood. We are less than 30 feet away from our neighbor who is breeding dogs. We have been there 45 years. This summer, we could not go out in our backyard. We entertain our family quite a bit. We could not go out in the backyard at any time because of the smell. Now, when you pay $1,700 a year for taxes, you should be able to enjoy your backyard. And it is, it's really a shame that we have been down here so much, we've talked to our councilman so many times, and we just haven't gotten anywhere. So, we need somebody to help us with this problem. Like I said, we've been there 45 years. We've tried to take care of our property, but the neighborhood is just, and like I said, from, from where I'm standing here to the end of that table is as far as my neighbor's house and as far as those dogs' kennels start. There is five of them back there. So, something needs to be done. We need some help in our neighborhood. You see all these people here from the neighborhood? Something needs to be done.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Reed. Is there anyone else here in the audience that would like to speak during our public comment period? Seeing and hearing now, we will close our public comment period and move into our committee Rules. Councilwoman Keith. Budget and finance. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Keith. Planning. Councilman Fusco.
Yes, thank you. 1 o'clock, regularly scheduled meeting. However, I'd like to remind council that 4 o'clock, we have the, we'd like to request everyone be present, the public hearings on the cell towers at 4.
Thank you. Public service. Councilwoman Keith. Public utilities. Councilwoman Samples. Public safety. Councilman Kammer. Parks and Rec. Councilman Neal. Housing. Councilman Kilby. Health and social services. Councilwoman Imobian. Economic development. Councilwoman Sims. Green committee. Councilman Swirsky. Is there anything else coming before this body? We have a motion to excuse. Councilman Freeman, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Councilman Neal, did you have some comments?
Yes, I just want to thank the residents from Greenwood for coming down back. Last year, 2018, in the fall, we brought legislation before this council dealing with the issue of the dog ordinance. And it was to increase the penalty to the next level of misdemeanor. This council can only address issues by ordinance resolution. The only way we can help them is by giving our neighborhood assistance department and the police department and the dog warden more ammunition to work with when they run into these types of problems. When that came in last September, this body chose not to pass that, that ordinance. So, I hope you will take into consideration what they've brought before you, because the one thing that this body can do is bring in, increase the penalty, or we have to fund that department better to where we have more than one and a half or however many dog wardens, I forget how many came before us. So, I'm just asking that this body take to heart what you heard today, so that when the legislation comes before you, we can act on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comments?
We're adjourned.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Seeing no opposing, we are adjourned.